So, the next item on the agenda is comments from any members of the public on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any comments tonight? Yes?
Um, the reason I came is-
Could you just state your name for the-
Um, Brian Beckich.
Right.
So, the reason I came is I'm a little bit, um, take issue with, um, the middle school, the, uh, the Coheedon trip. So, so, uh, my daughter's going into, I guess, the seventh grade and she's on one of the teams that they're, they take you a long, a week-long trip to a camp in September, to Coheedon. And, um, I have two issues. One, the cost, and, and two, the educational value. And so, I, I think it's something like a hundred and eighty dollars and, and it'll be gone for a week. And, first of all, I think for many families, that's, uh, it's difficult to afford that.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, it's hard to hold your children back and tell them they can't, they can't go because there's that whole, the whole group, the peer pressure and, and not being part of the group. And then, there are fundraisers, and I, speaking from our own family, um, things have financially been very tight. Taxes, our taxes went up four hundred dollars this year. Our kids are selling things for football, two kids for football. We don't want, I don't need to deal with the stress of having another child, having to raise money to offset this hundred and eighty dollars. And I, I think if the, if this district feels like it's educationally worthwhile, then the district should pay for it. And if they, and if it's not worth paying the hundred and eighty dollars, then, and the school district does not want to pay for it, then I think the kids, it should not be, uh, it should not be, um, taking place during school hours. Maybe if this group still wants to do it on the weekend or the holidays, that's fine. Now, my other son, who's going in eighth grade, he, he went on a few years ago, and, and, and he said it was like a vacation. It, it was very little educational value from his perspective. It was sort of like a, going away to a summer camp in the summer, and it was fun. But I, I'm, I sort of question, given the letter we got today with the math scores in the school, and, and I'm just not sure it's a wise use of academic time. And I definitely am bothered by the fact that, that it's another hundred and eighty dollars we have to come up with for this activity on top of everything else.
Right. Well, thank you for, uh, sharing that with us. We're obviously, I'm, I'm not prepared to, to directly respond to your, your comments, but I appreciate you coming and sharing those with us, and I think it's good for Mark to hear that as the superintendent.
So, I, I think I will, I will follow up either with Mark or the, the Essex Middle School principal-
Sure.
-within, uh, some time later this week or next week.
I think that would be great, and, uh, and we'll also be curious to see how that goes too, as well, as well. I know that's, it's a tough balancing act between wanting to provide, you know, different and unique opportunities and, and also managing the cost of those, those experiences. So, I appreciate your feedback and, and, uh, I appreciate your hearing.
All right.
I appreciate Mark being here to hear your comments as well.
Great, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
You don't have to go.
It sounded, it wouldn't play interesting, but-
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Gary.
Are there any acknowledgements from the board? Any comments from you?
Um, I'll just say, walking around, I was over at the middle school with you, um, for some ice cream and hour. Just the schools, that school, what I've seen here look great.
Yeah.
I'm really impressed with what, uh, what our maintenance people and crews put together. They didn't, I mean, they didn't peer too closely, but, um, things, things look good. It looks like we're starting off on the right foot.
Yeah, kudos on the ice cream social. It was well done, and it was great to see everybody there. Lots of smiling faces and excited kids, uh, and, uh-
Most were smiling.
And teachers.
Most were smiling. Yeah, that's right. Yeah, lots of teachers, and it was, uh, it was great, a great experience, so thanks, thanks for that. Anything else?
An observation that I have made over the years was that initially the outside grounds were, uh, perhaps to be more polite than could be said, were not taken very good care of. I'd like to recognize Roger again for the tremendous improvement for the appearance of what I'm going to say is the total outside school properties. Bushes are trimmed, sidewalks, you can actually walk on them without pushing branches out of the way. Fences are visible, et cetera, et cetera, and I think that shows very well and puts on a better appearance for the school district as a whole.
Thanks, David. Anything else? Yes, Roger?
Yeah, I'd just say thank you, but I'll share that with Neil.
Team effort, thanks. Great, and I think we'll be hearing from you guys a little bit later. So, one change to the consent agenda, um, you probably saw in the, the packets that went out, there's a change to the second-to-last item, so it's approval of budget amendments one through eight, not one through six. And I believe everyone got that updated information in the second email that went out. Maybe it was the third. So, uh- We're going to get this worked out, that's good. So, any, uh, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
No, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Rachel's seconds. Any, uh, well, there's no discussion on the consent agenda, so, yes.
Technicality, as it's amended, probably, versus as it's-
As it's amended, thank you.
Oh, that's a good, that's a good one. Okay, great. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, five-zero. And so, we'll move into the next item. Item three on the agenda is, uh, we're going to hear from Mark and his team on the solar array project facilities update and also AYP requirements. And then we'll move on to, after that, we'll move into our monitoring report on 2.1, treatment of students, parents, and guardians, so, Mark?
AYP does seem a little juxtaposed, doesn't it, against solar projects?
Yeah.
Did my best to make them align, but they just- Well, happy new year, everybody, and thanks to, um, Elsie from the Essex Reporter to visiting us. I look forward to working with you again this year. It's been a great partnership. Did you see her in the New York Times?
Yes, those are cool.
We have great, great respect for what you did, so thanks for being here. And of course, Roger and Neil will be part of a facility presentation. I, thanks for that acknowledgement, David. I'd like to add that, you know, these guys have great vision, but it's the men and women boots to the ground who are doing the work that I just have great respect for. And they do keep our places looking good and secure and great learning environments for kids, so. Well, we have about thirty minutes or so. Um, I've invited some, um, new colleagues of mine who've been working with us for the last several months about, thinking about, um, looking at creative solutions to our, our energy needs. And, uh, we started batting around the idea of solar once EMS put a, a small array of panels up on the EMS roof and just got me thinking a little bit more and others that I've spoken to about what, what's possible, given the two hundred acres of land that we own here in Essex Town. I thought it was about a hundred, but I was reminded it's more like two hundred acres. So, in light of the, um, you know, some of, you know, public policy that's, that we have to work with in Vermont, it seemed like striking up a conversation with, um, with a, an organization whose mission is to look at for creative solutions for community sustainable alternative energy, Encore sort of rose to the top. And I want to credit Jeff Forward, um, former colleague and worked for many years as a board member, and Chittenden, so knows the hard work that you do, about what those ideas would, you know, how, how we could bring some of those ideas to fruition. So, I'd like to introduce Jeff Forward, Chad Farrell, and Derek Moritz. As Derek and Chad are engineers and, um, work and own, I think, Encore. And Jeff has been acting as a facilitator and consultant, he as well, since the early nineties, I believe, just Jeff have had involvement with biomass projects statewide. So, really, these guys have been cutting-edge, working in Vermont, across the US, and Chad, I know he's been in actual, or Derek's been, I think, Central America, doing some pretty outrageous work, and also the northwestern part of the state, some pretty interesting things. So, I'd like to turn it over to you guys, maybe a quick bio on, a little bit of background, and then engage the board in sort of what this turnkey operation looks like and what we can expect, should we enter into that agreement.
Sure. Would you like us to-
Sure, yeah.
It's a friendly bunch.
Well, most of us are.
We miss the ice cream social.
I didn't see that they had a whole lot of leftovers that we might have brought, though.
Gee, should fund this up, too.
Well, great. Thanks very much, Mark, for that, uh, for that introduction. Um, my name is Chad Farrell. I'm the principal of Encore Redevelopment. This is Derek Moritz, uh, vice president of project development, and Jeff Forward with Forward Thinking Consultants, who we are working with on a number of these different, um, project opportunities. I guess, um, just to give you an introduction to our company and, and what we've done in the past, we've been pretty well anchored around distributed generation with respect to renewable energy. For the past three or four years, um, we've done, um, a number of projects with the Burlington School District. We've done, um, a project on Spear Street at the farm at South Village with the city of South Burlington as the customer. We're developing some other, um, we're developing a project at the Whitcomb Farm, uh, over in the village, and, um, have a number of, uh, other projects in, in development. It's an exciting time for, uh, in, in the energy space. We are at a point now where, um, you know, distributed generation with renewable energy sources actually makes financial sense, as, as it certainly does environmental sense. A lot of that is, um, based on some of the incentives that were, uh, in, in effect early on, um, in the last, uh, you know, since two thousand eight, two thousand and nine or so. It really has created a, a new marketplace. There's a lot of economic activity, a lot of jobs are being created, uh, in this, in this marketplace. From folks such as ourselves who sort of develop these projects to, um, you know, other engineers and, and consultants and attorneys and, uh, project finance folks, accountants, um, site contractors, electricians, there's been a lot of, um, a lot of activity in the space. So, um, essentially what we're talking about here is a public-private partnership. The way these projects work is, um, you know, we have financing partners that we work with that are, um, tax-motivated investors. One of the major incentives associated with solar projects is investment tax credits. So, um, those folks are interested in deploying capital into the renewable energy marketplace. They need, uh, bona fide customers or off-takers to enter into contracts to purchase essentially, um, the electricity that these, these systems produce. Now, when I say electricity, that's actually a little bit of a misnomer. We're producing net metering credits, um, not the actual electricity. Vermont is a regulated utility state. Uh, we have to go through the net metering, uh, program to ultimately have the, um, electricity show up on your electric bill. So, net metering, and in Vermont, we have a very progressive policy of group net metering, where we can work with a customer. The customer will essentially be purchasing these net metering credits, which show up as a credit, top-down credit on your electric bill. And in exchange for those credits, under a contractual agreement that we can, we can talk about, Mark and Roger have seen a template version of that agreement. I don't know if the rest of you have as well, but, um, under the auspices of that agreement, um, there's essentially a royalty that's available. We are able to essentially sell those net metering credits at a, um, at a ninety percent face value. So, there's essentially a ten percent value, uh, royalty, uh, offered to the customer in exchange for signing up and, and taking advantage of, of hosting one of these solar arrays on, on their property. So, um, you know, that's essentially, um, how the contractual arrangement would work. This contract has a number of different elements. Um, it's a standard legal document, but the elements are largely based around, um, citing this project on your property. So, there's, uh, concepts of, of a, of a general lease, and then there is, um, an arrangement in which there's a financial transaction. Net metering credits show up on the school's meter or meters, and through group net metering, we can, we can aggregate a number of different meters within the school district. And in exchange for those credits showing up on your bill, you pay, um, uh, ninety percent of the value of those credits. So, all of this is possible, again, because we do have, um, you know, a fairly bona fide marketplace. The incentives have been doing what they'd intended to do. Um, they've driven down the price of, uh, panels, solar panels, and, as well as the supporting equipment, you know, these panels would go on, um, racking systems. That industry has become more competitive. Um, the inverters, um, which solar projects generate power in direct current energy, we have to invert those, um, to, we have to invert that electricity into alternating current, uh, for, um, transmission into the electric grid. So, technically, you know, the electrons actually go into the grid. The utility sees that production coming on to, um, the grid and, um, measures that amount of production and multiplies that number of kilowatt-hours that come on to the grid, um, by the, um, the value of those net metering credits. So, I think, um, you know, you all are, are located in Green Mountain Power Service territory. GMP has been a pioneer in this type of, um, arrangement for a number of years now. They actually came out before it was legislatively mandated of all utilities to offer, um, an incentive for solar projects. And they did that because they saw the value of, um, solar energy as a peak sort of shaving device or tool. So, um, and I think GMP is, would be especially supportive of, of a project in Essex. You know, Essex is one of the load centers within the utility's distribution network. So, any production that they can have close to consumption or close to the load is a favorable project for them. So, um, we, we think this is a great project from, for a lot of different reasons. Not, none, nonetheless, being the actual fact that we are in, uh, you know, a pretty significant load center. Obviously, there would be educational opportunities associated with the array. The array would be monitored with a, um, a data acquisition system that would allow for real-time, you know, monitoring of the production on a daily, weekly, yearly basis. We can, you know, anybody can have a password into this web-based portal to show the production in real-time. We can pipe that right into the classroom, so you can actually see how much electricity is being generated or how much of your load is being addressed by a renewable resource. I, you know, as Mark indicated, this is a, we're calling this a turnkey approach. And turnkey essentially means that, you know, we are essentially doing all of the work. There are some permits that are required. Um, there is all the, um, the project development activities, the site design. We would cover all of that. So, um, the school district essentially, um, sits back and, and enjoys the value of the, um, the net metering credits that are produced. A number of different options throughout the contract. It's a twenty-year contract. We need these longer contracts to, um, allow for financing. So, um, the ten percent royalty for a project of this size would represent about a four thousand dollar a year royalty. During, um, the period of the lease, there is an opportunity for the school district to purchase the array after seven years. And the reason for that is these are tax-advantaged investments, so the IRS does have some pretty strict guidelines around, uh, when, um, these projects can be sold. And after we get through six and a half years, we've sort of gotten through the tax credit recapture period. And, um, there are also some depreciation benefits. Um, these projects are, are depreciated on an accelerated, um, schedule. So, we get through those two, uh, periods, and the project is available for sale. We think that's a pretty good opportunity for the school district. You know, should the, uh, project be purchased, um, there would be, you know, a simple payback period that would be met. And then, you know, say it's six or seven years, um, and after that, um, the school district would enjoy essentially all of the net metering credits, you know, and to do with them as they please. Timelines on these projects. The panels themselves would be warranted for twenty-five years. You know, the useful life is, is going to be a lot longer than that. The panels typically degrade at about a half a percent per year. So, presumably after forty years, you still have an eighty percent efficient, uh, piece of equipment. So, we do see some significant value in that purchase option, and again, that is part of the public-private partnership. School district, obviously, is a tax-exempt entity, cannot claim those tax credits that really make these projects pencil. And obviously, schools are, are good customers, as I, as I mentioned. Financially, long-term, you guys aren't going anywhere. Uh, you're going to have an electrical demand, uh, for twenty years and then some, so, um, we, we think it's a, it's a good match. It's why we were excited when Mark, um, you know, expressed interest in hearing more. And, um, I guess with that, I would, um, ask Jeff or Derek if there's anything else that you guys would add, and-
Maybe the sighting piece at some point would be-
Right. Actually, I'd love to turn that over to Derek. Um, he's been, um, sort of designing the layout. We have some, we have some handouts here that we can hand out. We can talk through that. And then, we found that the best way for, for folks to get comfortable with these projects is through the question and answer. So, we'd like to then just sort of hear.
Yeah, so, maybe if you guys had any initial questions on the program, uh, feel free to, to shoot those. Otherwise, I can discuss the proposed layout.
Question, you, you, uh, with schools being good customers, assuming you've done this with other districts?
Sure, yeah. Other schools, um, both here locally in Chittenden County, Chad mentioned, we've worked with the Burlington Public School District. They have a number of arrays producing power. Um, just commissioned a hundred and fifty kilowatts there in Burlington. So, this is a same-size project.
Yeah, municipalities are obviously also, um, attractive customers. So, the city of South Burlington, we've been working with them on, on a few different projects, um, and, uh, they have, um, yeah, they've entered into a similar agreement.
What's nice about schools is they generally follow the same, uh, profile as when the power is produced. So, essentially, folks come in seven, eight o'clock in the morning, turn on the lights, you know, the, the appliances. It's about the same time the sun comes up and starts generating solar energy. So, um, it, it makes for a good match for, for solar. But what we've proposed and, uh, worked with Mark and Roger to identify some of the feasible, uh, locations on the property that could accommodate a hundred and fifty kilowatt array. You know, the lowest hanging fruit from a developer's perspective is the most wide-open, um, field. But, uh, so we had, had looked at some of the, um, the fields closest to, is it Founders?
EMS.
Yeah.
The sledding hill.
Right, and so, uh, and, so those, we just, we, we considered them, but deemed them kind of off-limits because of other higher and better uses. So, we, we shifted focus to this bank between the, the school and the open field. And what's attractive about this is, number one, it's, it's visually shielded from aesthetic considerations. You're not going to have some of the private property owners on, on the street. They're going to be looking at it. Some folks like the way they look, some folks really don't, but nonetheless, um, it is tucked away. From a, a, a land-use perspective, um, we're confident we can keep this array out of the field, um, up on the bank, so there wouldn't be any, any, uh, you know, conflicts with ball, balls and, you know, things happening in the field. Parks and Rec would still have open and free use of the, of the field. It would require minimal, uh, clearing of trees to avoid some shading to the array. Any trees that would be threatened, threatened to fall on the array would, would, would need to come down on the north extent. There would also be an underground interconnection line from the inverter at the array to the proposed point of interconnection, um, likely on the street. So, we've evaluated two separate, um, options, one which would connect to the school transformer, the other which would connect to the, um, existing infrastructure on, on the street. Again, that would be underground, typically forty inches, uh, below the grade. It'd be, you know, backfilled and re-seated, so following construction, um, there's really no long-term impact of, of the interconnection line.
In conduit.
In protective conduit, sure. So, that's basically it. What we're talking about here is, is driven post down about six or eight feet into the earth, galvanized steel post. Um, these are fixed tilt, about thirty-degree tilt racking systems, so no moving parts. They're not the tracker systems you may see that follow the, the axis of the sun. So, from a long-term operations and maintenance perspective, it's little to none. There may be some vegetative clearing within the array, but no moving parts, which is nice. All of those O and M responsibilities are borne by us as, as the owner of the project.
Would be a fencing system, we talked about-
Yeah, so, some projects can, can get by without a fence. I think, given the, the use, um, of the site, there would be either a four or a six-foot, um, you know, black chain-link fence here. Keep kids and balls from going up underneath.
You know, I say kind of half joking, but half seriously, that, that is the sledding hill, um, you know.
That part's the sledding run right there, so I can imagine you'd want something to keep all the-
Yeah.
Errant's slutters, uh, creeping off to the right.
Sure.
Gotcha.
Yeah, that's a-
Yeah, that's it in a nutshell. So, yeah, a hundred and fifty kilowatts, um, that's enough to power a handful, I think, twenty-some Vermont average homes.
Yeah, twenty-five or so.
To give you a sense of scale. So, it's a fairly significant impact on, on the load of the school.
What, roughly speaking, is that ten percent of what the school uses? Is that ninety percent of what the school, what, how much do we use? About two hundred kilowatt-hours.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand kilowatt-hours, uh, and, what is it?
You know, when we looked at-
Like a million, million and a half, wouldn't you?
Yeah, it's a decent dent, but it certainly is not, you know, we, we tell folks, look, this is a good sort of, um, it's like a hedging mechanism here. And, uh, you know, we don't want to overproduce credits. Um, those are lost and revert back to the utility. So, we want to, you know, we want to lay up below your peak, or your, your total annual, uh, demand. So, I think the hundred and fifty kilowatts, there's a couple of reasons we look at a hundred and fifty kilowatt systems. You know, uh, one of the reasons is, uh, most Vermont communities have an electrical profile that is about that. If we, if we step up to say, you know, we're allowed to go up to five hundred kilowatts for a net metering project in the state of Vermont, but then we're talking about addressing probably a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars' worth of electric bill, and that, I believe, is, you know, going to exceed-
It's beyond this one. So, you know, your, your electric bill is about, uh, it was about a hundred and, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, as I recall. Something, something on that order.
Yeah.
Hundred and thirty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So, this wouldn't, you know, this wouldn't, uh, at twenty thousand kilowatt-hours, you'd, you're talking between thirty and fifty thousand dollars a year worth of electricity, so it's-
Knocking out a third.
A third, something like that. And, which is attractive. One of the reasons you look at a school is because they do have load, you know, so like a, you know, convenience store doesn't have enough of a load to, uh, to, to do this. And the five hundred kilowatt array would be considerably bigger. It'd be harder to find it on-site. It's also diff, more difficult permitting. There's a, there's a threshold at a hundred and fifty that you go above a hundred and fifty, then the permitting gets, you have to, do the same permit process as Vermont Yankee. Especially, yeah, two-fifth, four-eighths, so you want to just try to stay away from that.
Well, this is obviously putting the cart way ahead of the horse, but, uh, you know, wow, this works great. Three years from now, can we do another one? Is that a possibility? Add it to a new project, a new hundred and fifty kilowatt, permitted the easy way, it's a matter of finding a place to put it.
Yeah. It's possible. What the program lends itself to is, is this group net metering. So, even if the property may not be on-site, you know, the, the town or, um, or through a collaborative effort could look at hosting an array at a different location and wheeling the credits to, uh, the school's electric account. But certainly, I mean, I think the board, the public service board who has jurisdiction over these projects would probably frown on just going down the field, um, but, uh-
So would parking racks.
No point. I'm trying to, why not the top of the building? Where the, we've already got the little array, you know, but it's-
Yeah, roofs are, roofs are challenging. I mean, they are a great use of space, for sure. They're challenging from a number of different perspectives. First of all, when we're asking for a twenty-year contract, we really, you know, we just did a project at the Flynn School in Burlington. We followed it just immediately after they finished the new roof, which had a twenty-year warranty. So, nobody's going to be at risk of having to pull those panels off, have the lost production during that time, and then pay to put them back up. Which is, you know, can be, can be a little bit pricey. So, um, when we looked at the roof ages here, we said, yeah, you're kind of, I think you are halfway through a twenty-year roof on one of the schools. And, um, the other issue is, uh, production. You know, when you put them on the roof, they have to be balasted. They don't penetrate the roof, um, but they have to have a lower angle. So, what you have is you have snow swaling in the wintertime, where the snow covers those arrays. At thirty degrees, the snow's going to slide right off as soon as the sun comes out. You know, when it's more like five or ten degrees worth of inclination, which you need to have to withstand the wind loading forces, um, you, you just don't have as much production, so it's not as efficient at an array. And ultimately, the, the way this, um, opportunity works is the customer and the, you know, project, uh, finance entity are, are aligned in the interest of producing the greatest number of kilowatt-hours per year possible. Per, you know, unit acre of land, and that would, this is a little bit less than- Per, you know, unit acre of land, and that would, this is a little bit less than an acre.
I have a question. So in the news, I think just last week, there was some, some news about, I forget the utility, pushing back on the amount of net metering that was being sort of put on the grid. And I wonder, does that complicate this project at all and the viability of this project?
Not really. I'll start that, and then Derek, I think, can, can add. And Jeff, too, has been very involved at the state level with respect to these, these policies. Those, some of the smaller utilities, some of the munis and some of the, you know, Washington Electric Co-op was the, was the, was the utility that you're referring to. And the Washington Electric Co-op, they already have almost a hundred percent, or if it might be a hundred percent renewables already. So, you know, their, their concern is impact on the ratepayer. And in, in GMP's territory, the Department of Public Service has recently done a study that shows up to four percent net metering in a utility's jurisdiction, there is no impact on the ratepayer. And GMP, we're not quite, we're about halfway through there. I think we're about two percent. So it does speak to timeliness of this project. I mean, these, these projects will not be available forever. There are some folks that say, you know, as soon as we hit three percent, we're going to increase that cap a little bit. And Massachusetts just went to six percent net metering for their state policy. So that's possible, but right now, we still have a decent amount of bandwidth before we hit that four percent. Again, GMP is a very different utility than a Washington Electric Co-op. Washington Electric Co-op is largely residential customers. GMP has a pretty hefty utility, or industrial load. So they have a lot more benefit for solar projects and the peak shaving aspects of those projects.
GMP is a summer-peaking utility, and, and many of the other smaller utilities are winter-peaking. You know, so where solar is a nice matchup for the, for the grid is that it produces the most when the grid needs it the most, in a hot summer day in July. That's true about the grid, but the utilities, the local utilities, they, they live and die by their tariff, which is kind of independent from the grid. It's, it's more based on their rates. And so what, what the, you know, what the smaller utilities are concerned about is rate impact. You know, that they're, and it, it is something that the state is going to have to grapple with at some point, you know, of, if, if, the line is, is if you think it to its ultimate conclusion, if everybody net-metered, who would pay for the poles and wires or the CEO's salaries for that matter, you know, I mean, somebody has to pay for all that stuff. At four percent, we're not really very close. So it's been very successful, and I think that's one of the pushbacks that you're feeling, is that, you know, it's, it's been successful. It's done what it's intended to do.
So I just have another question about the, the grid hookup. So I assume that, even though this is going to be underground, you still might need to clear trees to make this path.
That's right.
And if you do go with option one, is that going to have a negative impact on that neighbor?
It, it would not, so, a couple of things. One is, it would need to be underground, it would need to allow for a corridor for a small bucket, you know, a track hoe, a track machine to have a trench all the way to the road. Once we get to the road, you could do two things. You could either come overhead with a new pole and then go overhead, or you could go across the road, either cut or bore under the road and come up at that, that existing structure. We're going to be going through that process with the utility, through their interconnection approval. They kind of show us the cost, proposed point of interconnect, maybe it's not this structure, but it's at this transformer, or maybe it's the next pole down. But with regard to impacts and opportunity for a butters or neighbors to chime in, the, the permit application goes to all the neighboring landowners. So through a twenty-eight-day public comment period, they have a chance to say, hey, this doesn't look good. You know, express their concerns to the public service board, and then those could come back and be delighted.
The largest amount of infrastructure is, is actually at the location of the array, though. I mean, it's important to note, this really is just an underground wire that, you know, maybe, maybe, as Derek said, there could be a pole on the other side of the street. The, the three-phase line is on the northwest side of Foster Street. So we do have to get across that road somehow. But generally, there'd be next to no visual impact outside, perhaps a pole within these trees. You do have pretty good soils here, you know, it's, it's all sand. It's beach sand, so really, you know, there's, that's, that's pretty helpful. So I think the trees that would be affected would, you know, would be pretty minimal. You know, and I think getting down to the forty inches would not be a problem on this site.
Another thing I'll mention, through the, the permitting process, you know, the Agency of Natural Resources has a chance to chime in over wildlife considerations. The Department of Public Service could chime in over aesthetics or public safety, so on and so forth. So there's a number of recipients from this permit application.
So typically, although I'm sure it's hard to predict all of them, what's the timeline for start the project, finish the project?
Yeah, so we're good ways down the road as far as, you know, getting Mark and Roger comfortable with how the, the project and the transaction works. The permit process is roughly forty-five days. And then also, working through the kinks of the, the contract. Once we have the contract and the permit in hand, constructing these things is, is pretty easy. We're looking at six to eight weeks of a construction period. So we could conceivably be in, in service and operating by the end of the year.
Roughly, you've put some numbers out there in terms of the investment that is made to materials, labor, permitting. What's your figure of now in terms of the cost of a full project that we would not absorb any costs?
Yeah, somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars.
And Jeff, you've done some modeling, I think, or you've talked about, when that seven-year window opens up, there's an option for the board to purchase at a lesser rate than the five hundred thousand dollars. And so we, based on your modeling, it's about a forty thousand dollar per year savings with solar.
Correct.
Net about ten percent of that, or four thousand dollars.
Yep.
But what, when you look at the appreciation value after seven years, what do you think the, again, these are, these are fixed estimates, but what would the board be looking at in terms of if they decide to purchase that project?
Yeah, we tell folks, and we have to give a bit of a range here because, you know, the IRS is pretty clear that this has to be a fair market value transaction. But it's generally in the thirty to fifty percent range. And that kind of, you know, that depends on what electric rates are looking like in seven years. Therefore, what is the, the value of the electricity that is produced? Is it, at that point, is it forty-five thousand dollars a year, or is it forty, or? But somewhere, you know, so if it's thirty to fifty percent, somewhere in the order of, you know, two hundred to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So what we would purchase it for at, at year seven, if we chose to?
That's right.
And one thing I'll mention, that a lot of the public school and township customers look to do is take some of the savings and potentially put towards a, a strategy to acquire the system after seven years. Alternatively, you know, the public sector customers have access to, to long-term low-interest bonds that could, could acquire the system at a fairly low cost of money.
Or municipal lease, or some other kind of financing mechanism.
So our financial commitment is zero for the first seven years, just rake in four thousand dollars of savings. At seven years, either drop a couple hundred thousand dollars on it and get it, now we get forty thousand savings. Or just continue with the four thousand a year, it's still your stuff on our property for twenty years.
Yep, that's right.
Any other questions from other board members?
You knew I was going to ask some questions.
What would be the approximate length and width of this array?
Yeah, so we're talking a hundred and fifty kilowatts, it's between an acre and an acre and a half. I think we had here four rows.
That gives me an idea.
Yeah, call, call it about twelve to fifteen feet between each row, so it's enough to get in and mow some grass.
You, you actually do benefit here because of that slope, because of the sledding hill. We can actually get them a little bit tighter together, you don't have as much shading from each row to the next.
What is the lowest point of these arrays from the ground?
About three feet, three to three and a half feet. And then they, the top would be about nine feet.
Talk about vandalism.
Well, it's an issue, certainly, again, there'd be insurance on the array. Obviously, we, you know, the ownership group would, would maintain that insurance. Again, it's in everybody's best interest to make sure this thing is producing as much electricity or net metering credits as possible. We think that the fence sort of dissuades that. But, yeah, no, it is something that, you know, I, I think in this location, it's probably, it's not a huge issue, but it is certainly an issue that, that certain projects grapple with.
Because it's hidden, this one in particular is hidden from sort of public view.
Yep.
So there's that risk.
Yeah, a little bit, for sure.
I wonder, you know, not having seen the, the contract, what are the, what are some of the out clauses for you guys in terms of the contract? What are some of the, there must be some safety mechanisms that you build into a contract to protect your interests. What do those look like?
Sure.
It's really just a default. I mean, if, 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 if the customer doesn't pay or can't pay, then we would have the opportunity to find another customer that can pay. Alternatively, if, if the project ceases to operate, it, it comes out of the ground. You know, so there's some decommissioning protections there. Otherwise, it's really just about milestones and schedule payment obligations, so on and so forth.
One of the reasons this is an attractive investment for, you know, folks to invest in, whether anybody, really, you know, if you want to put one in your house, or, you know, bigger institutional investors, is because it's really predictable. The output is really predictable. You know, they, the, the models are based on like a hundred years' worth of weather data. You know, which might change a little bit, but, you know.
Yeah, each year.
Probably more rain. But, so it's, it's really easy to calculate, you know, a return on the investment, whatever that investment is. A lot easier than like, you know, the stock market.
Do I assume that these panels produce more electricity during the summer than they do the winter?
They do, yeah.
They produce most when we're out in school.
Yeah, as far as the, the credits go, it doesn't matter.
It's averaged over a year.
It's averaged over the year. So as far as the credits go, it, it's what, you know, I don't think you'd hit it on this one. But what could happen is you could have a negative bill at some point, for a while, and you have a credit on that bill until you catch up.
You might have that in the summer, yeah.
You might, yeah, it's possible.
We really do look at it on an annual basis, because if you, you gotta use them or lose them. It's kind of like your cellphone minutes, they, they don't roll over past twelve months, but they will roll month to month.
So I'm just looking at the clock here, and I want to make sure that we have time for our under agenda items. Are there any other questions that must be answered?
Thank you.
I just want to follow up to David's question, and the notion of vandalism. How fragile, and what are you seeing for vandalism? People throwing things at it, a lacrosse ball hitting it, is that a risk? Or is it?
It actually, you know, that, yeah.
Is it painting them?
Sure.
Like, you know.
You know, the, the only, you know, I heard in Rutland, they built one, and they built it kind of close to an overpass, and some kids were throwing rocks down on them. These panels are fairly resilient. I mean, they do, you know, I, I think a lacrosse ball, unless it was really going a hundred miles an hour, is probably not going to do anything.
What about a baseball?
You know, yeah, I think we would get concerned about a, a good, solid David Ortiz pop-up type. But, yeah, I mean, I think, again, yeah, they, they are vulnerable to, to damage.
They test them with, they test them with like golf balls, right? You know, like, a hundred meters or something like that.
They stand up to, you know, golf saw, golf ball-sized hail damage. What you have going for it is, the, the, the glass is backed by the polysilicon and then some other polymaterial. So it's supported, so it's not like a piece of sheet glass that would be, that would be shattered. They, they withstand the elements, they were built to withstand rain, snow, sleet, hail.
But not baseballs.
No, baseballs. We, we've pulled out of a couple of projects that are right adjacent to it, and we actually looked at that on one of the.
One of the fields.
For a breather to talk.
Didn't get very far.
You know, again, it's the kind of thing where the, the system would be monitored not only by folks, you know, with, associated with the school district, but certainly by the ownership group as well, as well as the installation contractor. So if we see something where an entire string goes down, we'll see the production go way down. There's an alarm that actually goes out in the form of an email. And that tells us to go check on it and see what's going on. There is, you know, insurance coverage for business interruption, which is, you know, intended to address, you know, issues such as this, where, you know, there is some lost revenue as a result of vandalism or other, any other kind of act of nature. But, you know, again, it's.
And that's insurance that you would carry as the owner of the array.
Yep.
We would presumably carry that at year seven.
Upon taking ownership, that's right.
And in the interim, there's no piece of the contract that has us bearing any expense at all. We stand to be the beneficiary of it from an educational standpoint, from a cost standpoint.
Yep.
A potential investor in it, seven years down the road.
That's right.
And in the interim, anything else is covered by your insurance and your business risk and your program.
Yep.
Okay.
How often do you monitor the site for bushes growing up in front of the panels?
About two or three times a year.
I do.
And then the other question I had right now is, so when this is being, you know, if, if that was something that was decided and this project did go in, would that limit the use of the prairie field during that time of construction?
Sure. So the trenching and the installation of the line itself would only take a day or two. And then as soon as the, and so during that day or two, certainly, we wouldn't want any kids near the trench or anything. But once it's refilled and backfilled and, and compacted, we'd be re-seated, probably some mulch over top. It'd kind of be up to the school, really, how, how they want to take care of that. You know, we're talking about a three-to-five-foot corridor.
But just like, no, well, this is, would actually be down.
Yeah.
Prairie fields down there, so I didn't know.
Gotcha.
Like along the hillside.
Yeah, along the hillside.
We'd be fenced off, or at least sort of, you know, there'd be some construction flagging there, and, you know, generally, these guys are going to work from seven in the morning until, you know, until it gets dark. You know, if it's the kind of, you know, the winter months, that's kind of, you know, what they're limited to. And, yeah, so it would be a typical construction-type project where there would be, you know, caution tape and all those kinds of other precautions taken.
I, I was, I was pleased by the site, you know, because, you know, that particular piece of this field is, you know, it's not like.
Sleding accidents. Exactly, yes.
Mark, what about this field up here? Would that be, either be disturbed?
There were three options, Dan. That was one, we felt, because of the proximity of the school, of being used primarily by middle schoolers who were looking for sort of that chance to get outside and stretch. They play soccer on its own auxiliary soccer field, it just didn't seem.
No, but I mean, for running that line across it.
Yeah, I think that that's what Derek is proposing.
Yeah, so.
Coming across that field.
Right, with that, for, I mean, again, it's a short period of time, it's.
I think we can work around it, yeah.
I think the last pole on that street is in this area here.
And I think, timing-wise, you guys wouldn't be digging anything up back there after soccer season. I don't think there's as much traffic down that quarter or going to those fields.
But I'm walking in.
And I think that's six weeks in soccer time. You guys won't be digging up, you'll be done your permitting and.
I've met with, with Ally Viall, we'll walk, we'll go on a prairie field trip on Thursday. But, you know, she's, you know, as the director of Park and Rec, you know, I think that we could park, we could coexist quite easily.
Mark, any next steps for the board at this point?
No, I, I was interested, you know, looking at board policy. I do think it's, you know, my call, but as I said to Brendan, it's awfully prudent to be checking in with my board, who I serve, as trustees of the organization, making sure you're in support of, of this, this, the direction we're taking. As, as Chad pointed out, you know, we've studied this, and we've looked at the numbers over the last several months, and we feel it's a good deal for, for the district as it relates to the reinvestment of money saved towards, you know, meeting the ends of the, of the district, vis-à-vis for kids. So it has a lot of value to it. And knowing that we don't own it, and there's, the liability really falls on the, the owners, it just seemed like a, you know, a good deal to go. And to go on is good right now, good sledding right now, because we know that at the end of this calendar year, it might be more restricted. So I, you know, I would recommend to the board that you, that you approve, you know, my wanting to go forward with it. But again, would defer to your facilitation at this point, Brendan.
Well, I don't think it, I mean, I, I would love to hear a straw vote in terms of how you guys were feeling about it, but it does, it's definitely a project that's within Mark's purview to, to give a green light to. But any concerns or reservations from the board?
No, I can't think of, I'm trying to come up with anything why we shouldn't do this.
Yeah, I'm really excited about it.
As long as you leave my sledding hole.
See, I don't sled there, so I'm okay.
The only two things that register with me is the vandalism part. And also, I'm not sure if people sit on the bank to watch any of the programs.
It's pretty brushy.
But I'm not sure how many ants there might be in that thing.
I think maybe here, but that's, that's a nasty area.
It's very awful.
Yeah.
You haven't been back there in a while, you should take a, take a look.
Well, you know, what I'm excited about is that the, the state has a goal of ninety percent renewable energy by twenty. Well, you know, what I'm excited about is that the the state has a goal of ninety percent renewable energy by twenty fifty. It's a very ambitious goal. It's 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 the most ambitious goal in the country, you know? And this is one way, you know, this is one of the steps towards that. You know, that's, to me, the reason I like, I I mostly work with schools. That's why I'm working with these guys. I mostly work with schools. And to me, it's it's really the, you know, the key to the future is is getting these kinds of projects ingrained, not just what it is, you know, but why? Why, why are you doing it? And I hope, as an educational institution, you're not doing it just for the money. It's it's it's, um, it it's the right thing to do. And 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 it, you know, it's a real opportunity to teach kids the difference between AC and DC, you know, why, you know, how 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 these things go in, how they, you know, I'd love to see it in economics, you know, how does it impact your bills, what, you know, all that kind of stuff, you know?
So cool.
Yeah, so very cool, I think, right?
Yeah, I know when when the EduCan, we put in a little solar array up there, there was a lot of educational opportunity there.
Yeah.
As one of our, our school groups actually wrote the grant, you know, about four. It's quite a neat process.
The tough part is, it's hard to get school kids up on the roof, but this will be right there, where you can take them down, take a look.
Thanks so much, gentlemen, for coming and sharing and answering our questions and.
I just want to comment how much, how rewarded it's been working with you guys. I mean, you're top-flight professionals, and you killed my hand a few times through some of the thickness of the, the concepts and some of the requirements that you're gonna go through. So I appreciate that. And if you haven't checked out their website, we post them on your school notes. You should. I mean, it's just provides a little more background of these guys.
So we'll, we'll be in touch later on this week with you, Mark, to complete the permitting.
I'll be in touch.
Thank you guys.
Appreciate it, yep.
All right, gentlemen. Need to get back on track here.
Talk fast, Roger.
Oh, yeah, do you want to put the agenda up? I've got a PowerPoint that Roger and Neil are gonna walk us through.
Oh, then you, do you want, do you need to log in then?
No, I've got, I've already called that out.
Oh, you already have?
Do you think you fellows could make that presentation?
Dan, can we, can we call the PowerPoint up so we can just run through that?
That is just so exciting.
Want me to just launch?
Yes, please do, yeah.
Well, let me just start by acknowledging both Roger and mostly Neil tonight.
Wow.
The incredible work that he has. We actually have a picture of Neil in this, in his presentation. But it's almost daily that I hear, get feedback from folks in the field all across our three campuses on the, on the amount of support they get from Neil, and the amount of work that he puts into his job. The guy does not work forty hours a week. It's sometimes more than sixty to seventy, because it's just on the job, responding when things come up. So not only has he met the need of the people working in the district, but he's also saved us, I think, Roger, a ton of dough. He's doing a lot of mechanical work, so Neil, I can't tell you enough how much I appreciate you being on the team.
Well, thank you very much.
I felt needed to come tonight to hear that publicly, for Elsie to report. Patrick, Patrick and Jesse to catch on camera that we just think you're, you're doing great work.
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Roger as well, who is, supervises the work of the district. I agree, you know, Roger's vision and his commitment to excellence is by far second to none. So they're here tonight. I gave you a sneak preview at our retreat on the fifteenth, but we've put together an incredibly entertaining PowerPoint of tile, rug, and sidewalk. A little more entertaining presentation than, oh, sorry. What I'm asking Roger and Neil to do, and they will probably team on this, is just to walk through some of the projects. And it really was based on the board's vision of starting this capital improvement, or improvement fund, and we've tapped into that this year. And we want to talk a little about the budget implications, but it's been, it's been targeted towards important projects that have been on our list for for some time. So without any further ado, I'll turn it over to Roger and Neil to walk us through the, dazzle us a little bit.
Dazzles on the agenda, then maybe we start with the pictures. This is.
Should we kill the lights, or? If I turn one bank off, Jesse, will that be okay? Or Patrick?
This is the new floor tile in the elementary cafeteria. Hire a contractor to come in and remove the old-fashioned tile that was there previously and install this environmentally friendly tile.
Was that asbestos previously?
Yes. Vinyl asbestos tile.
What is the new tile made of? Sorry. Do you know what the new tile is made of?
Vinyl.
It's just vinyl.
Vinyl, nine oh four.
Yep, gotcha.
New tile in the front lobby at at the elementary school.
It's really nice.
In the vestibule area and in the lobby. That's just a picture of the vestibule area, new paint, the tile. And to the left of of the area that you see here is where some of the security improvements will be going. One of the classrooms that has new tile, is that?
This is all elementary school.
That, that, by the way, is that previous picture and the, and the accented tile here, the blue tile, those were rooms where we had a mold problem in carpeting this summer, so.
There is, there is a a plan in place, although it's 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 not terribly formal at this point, is as carpet needs to pull, be pulled up, our strong recommendation is that we replace it with tile, because there are a lot of nasties that grow in the carpet, and it's time to start replacing some of those.
Neil was at Home Depot buying dehumidifiers about eight o'clock one evening. That did help, but but through some testing that Neil and one of our consultants did, it wasn't that we had water coming up or water vapor through the concrete. It was the very humid air that was causing the problems, so. This is the hallway in the pod area where we removed the wallpaper. So the pods themselves and the hallways of all the older wallpaper are, is now gone.
Are they gonna be able to pin up student, uh, work, artwork and stuff?
We're, we're currently putting up these two-inch cork tack strips all up and down the the pod hallways and the community spaces in each pod to to allow that.
Committee of teachers in the building helped the principal determine the the height of the strips. They're at two different, two different heights, and they are going in, so. Everybody, everybody, there there was some concern initially that that how would staff members hang artwork without the wallpaper there, but the overwhelming sentiment seems to be, according to Neil and Mr. Farrell, that that the returning teachers do think the area looks much more attractive.
Are they going to get murals painted on these naked walls?
Time will tell. None scheduled.
You feeling artistic, Dave?
The truck strips are up and they're.
This is the new front sidewalk in front of this building.
Very nice.
It's great.
Down at the end of the sidewalk, an abandoned propane tank that Mr. McIntosh discovered is now out of the ground and.
Oh, wow.
Black top.
What'd you say, was burping or gurgling, or it's doing something under the ground?
Well, as you know, we had a really rainy summer, and and they happened to dig it up when it was pouring rain. And and, yeah, it started to, it was abandoned, so this, it appeared like a leak. It appeared like they punctured it and it was leaking, but in fact, it probably was punctured forever, and they unearthed it, and then it got a lot of water, and the water was rushing into it. And then it would burp, then it would, you know, air would come out, and then more water would rush in, and then the air would come out. Yeah, I mean, and and even after all these years, it had that propane smell.
Yeah.
And, you know, it sent up the red flags, and we evacuated the building and, you know, all kinds of things that.
Fortunately, the superintendent was around to keep things on the.
That's the baby.
It probably was harmless all along.
But safety first.
Safety first, absolutely.
You didn't tell him that tank was the other.
And new black top where the tank previously was, and completing the sidewalk area, there was rumbly black top there before, correct?
Yeah.
Is that side entrance used at all now?
I think it still is. I think before school starts in the morning, some, some young children get dropped off there.
Yeah, the the seven o'clock band, seven.
The band, yeah, yeah.
Parents drop off in the bus lane, I assume, the way that they always feel that they have an obligation to.
Typically.
Yes.
For the seven o'clock stuff, I think.
Many pull back to the kitchen as well, and.
Yep.
Yeah, the the seven thirty parents.
Pull back to the kitchen.
Often do.
And are there any plans to stop that, or don't the buses go through there at all now?
They do. The buses that have kids on it that need to be dropped off for abandoned orchestra, because that is a poss, kids can ride the bus and be dropped off there. There's very few buses, though, that actually swing through.
I've never seen a conflict between them, honestly.
Not at that hour. We're at the five o'clock pickup hour.
This is in front of Founders. We're getting into some of our more exciting photographs. Now, this is repair to a, a catch basin. You see the, the round metal object there in the, in the lawn? One location in the front and a, and a, two locations in the back, right?
The the new ones out in the back, yep.
Original catch basins, original to the building where the brick, the mortar was failing between bricks. The the new catch basins are all a, a concrete sleeve, so with these older ones, water, you know, the mortar deteriorated and water was causing the pavement to sink in a bit. That's the catch basins at the back of Founders where the pavement was sinking in more than a little bit.
Yes, that got to be a pretty impressive sinkhole.
Speaking from a person who had his daughter x-rayed.
Neil kept suggesting that I go into the sinkhole and take some measurements. I wasn't quite sure why he wanted this.
He didn't ask him?
So, oops, Dave, gotta go back. This is the most exciting picture. This is a new catch basin put in the back lawn of Founders. I'm standing on the, the playground area there, taking that picture. But everything looks calm now. In the wintertime, with melting snow, that was a sizable pond, so we're hoping to correct that with two new basins.
And was that why the ice would build up, do you think, or is it kind of a combination of different effects?
Well, that's why we put them in, was to hope to stop this ice from building up. Certainly, the, you know, the snow would melt and then pool, and hope now it melts and goes down these catch basins and drains, and we don't need to salt our playground and sand it to allow kids to go out there.
New carpeting on the risers in the music room here in, in this building. You'll have to do some repair before the carpet went into the underlying structure, but no more tape and, on seams of carpet and.
No.
Worn carpet. Picture that just.
Oh, sorry.
Flew by, and and the second picture is new paint going in at, at this library. Sarah Jablonski and one of the other teachers are painted a portion of, of the room. And our district summer painter did one of the walls. The mural is now no longer in the back of the room. So the, the only original color is, is the green that we faced tonight. New, what kind of floor is that, Neil?
Polyspartic. It's a, it's an epoxy floor coating, fairly textured, seamless. It's, it's a.
Maintenance free.
Pretty maintenance-free, yeah. There's no waxing or anything. They just mop it, and they seem to like it, the, the residents of the building. Keep getting requests for more and more of it, so.
So we did the men's and women's restroom off the lobby of this building, the public restrooms. Last year, Neil did, had the same treatment done on a few of the student lavatory floors in the middle school.
Almost can't see them.
Of the mega fans.
Almost can't see them, but if you sort of look carefully at the ceiling, maybe, Mark, and help, those are, are new ventilation fans in the cafeteria at EMS. Very large fans. They turn slowly, but move a lot of air, completely quiet, and it's, that's a picture with the kids here in the, during the summer Y program, and and quite a noticeable difference during the summer or today, during the.
Close to a couple hundred people in there in my opening remarks, and it was quite noticeable. It was comfortable compared to last year, which is brutal.
Last year was brutal.
Yeah, so it was a really nice feature today.
I sort of hurt Neil's feelings, I think, when I took this picture, 'cause I, 'cause I, when I first saw this dishwasher, I thought, how could that cost twenty-two thousand dollars?
That's the crowning jewel of the summer, in my opinion.
I don't look at it and immediately see twenty-two thousand dollars, like, a new car was parked there or something.
I think in terms of the disruption it would have caused had we not replaced that, and we waited for the nineteen sixty-eight machine to fail mid-school year.
Lunch.
You know, mid-lunch, yeah, and, you know, parts were unavailable for that old machine anymore. It was just obsolete. And I think we did really good. We bought another Hobart machine that served us so well the first time. That duct work up above, we bought a very similar machine. It fit right in, plug and play, you know? We did very well, I think, on the project. And we did it in-house. We just bought the machine and we installed it, so.
Not we, I didn't help.
Oh, Rod, you were a tremendous help.
Actually, go back to that picture, too. I always, I always liked the human touch, but, no, seriously, the, Mark mentioned earlier, some of the money that Neil saved us in his time with the district doing things himself, rather than us hiring contractors, and the installation cost for the dishwasher was, you know, would have been pretty steep had we, had we had to hire it, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
And I'll let you explain that picture that I was apparently shaking when I took.
Yeah, it looks like you're shaking a bit. This is a, this is a hot water heater we installed in the boiler room in lieu of an electric booster heater in that dish machine. You have to supply a hundred and eighty-plus degree water to rinse the dishes, to sanitize. Through Efficiency Vermont, they have told us a great deal about our peak demand charges. That's a forty-five kilowatt booster heater. It, it is your peak, you know, and by installing a gas hot water heater, we eliminate, I don't remember the number, essentially about a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar-a-month savings in peak demand charges. That's what we experienced here at Founders. Uh, there's some debate about whether that's really your peak or not, looking at the actual usage. But we did the same thing here in Founders last year, and that, that's what we realized for a savings of peak demand. So we chose to do it in this building as well, and I believe we'll see the same. I'm sorry?
That's the boiler room at the middle school?
That's the boiler room at the middle school, yeah.
But the boiler room and the dishwasher are only seventy-five feet apart?
Recirc. You, I put a recirc line in, so.
It's always there.
It's a, it's a foot from the machine.
What about this one?
Same. I did the same here.
The, the auxiliary heater isn't in the boiler room here. It's in the supply room off the kitchen. By the way, that project, uh, taking out the electric booster heater at Founders and putting the, the gas hot water tank, we also got a five-hundred-dollar incentive from Efficiency Vermont. We anticipate similar assistance on, on this. But, but yes, we've, I mean, as I, as I budget each year for electricity, our electric, our electric bills are going down. I haven't done it real scientifically, studying kilowatts and all that, but dollar-wise, it's going down each year, so these, these improvements have to be helping. Mark has spilled his chocolate milk quite often in the break room in the district office, so we had to replace the carpet there with a new floor tile, but we, we think the room looks much brighter now.
It's very nice.
And in your board meeting room in the district office.
Roger dropped a piece of cherry pie last year.
Does he make you be hungry?
New carpet, yeah.
New carpet.
Yeah, it's very nice. So, the only other piece, unless there are any questions about that presentation, was to do a very brief update on the security system and where we are today. So, um, Roger, again, I'll defer to you and Neil. I suppose, we've been talking with our contractors almost on a di- well, daily basis.
Not almost daily.
Fugue time to try to start up, be ready for Wednesday. We have some, we may have some delay in some, one part in particular, but I'll again defer to a quick update on that, Roger.
We did involve our architect, John Alden, to, uh, design the system and to, to help put together the, uh, the bid package. Neil had, had received some quotes from area vendors before we involved the architect, but we didn't. We thought it, for, uh, given the importance of the security project and the, the, um, potential costs, that it would made sense to involve our architect on that, so, and as Mark said, we're still wrapping up the, uh, the installation. But when you visit, uh, building offices after all the parts and pieces are, are hooked up, each, uh, each building administrative assistant and each registrar will have a second seventeen-inch monitor on their, on their work area, which will display four images. So, ca- there's one camera located outside the front, main front entrance that sort of pans the area. Another camera that, that will capture images of, of the people that enter the unlocked outside doors and are remaining in the vestibule where the doors to the building are locked, and then two other exterior locations generally around the back or sides of the schools. The, uh, once a visitor is in the vestibule, uh, they will, first of all, the office people will, will hear a chime when that person activates a, a button and speaks into a, a speaker. The, the office folks will, will be able to communicate back and forth with that intercom type system and they'll have that, uh, visual image. Also, the office personan- personnel will then have a, a button to, uh, to release the lock on the interior door, so.
Now, obviously, that system won't be in place at eight in the morning when the kids are coming in.
And we're, some of the work we have to do over the next forty-eight hours is to work with the technicians on when it, it's all gonna be programmed from a, from one of, a server that we purchased, so it'll be open for probably twenty minutes in the morning. Different depending on your building and, and then, um, open, it'll open, the computer will open it when kids are leaving and moms and dads are picking kids up. After four o'clock, more than likely, we don't know what the time is, it's going to be open because we don't have people monitoring at this point, people allowing to come and go. So, we'll need to think about that as a procedure in the future. EMS shuts their front door at four P M. Only can you get into lobby B for sporting purposes, extracurricular, so we'll, we'll think about that.
Our understanding is though, too, that the, uh, the cameras, by the way, they're all the latest digital type equipment, which we thought would, would be the most prudent type of equipment to buy for, for long- longevity reasons. Uh, the, uh, these digital cameras are motion activated, so although the doors won't be locked, say, for example, at eight o'clock in the morning, the cameras will be recording, uh, movement entry in and out of the building whenever that is occurring.
And similarly, like in the evening, arriving for meetings or.
Oh, yes, yes, yep.
Will there also be a record kept, uh, of, of the activities that the cameras record?
Has that capability? We're, again, a lot of these sp- very specific details, we, we don't yet have. We're speaking more in generalities. But we're told that it has very sufficient, uh, storage capacity of, of at least thirty days, so.
But the cameras would be on twenty-four, seven, three, six.
Yes, but they will only be in operation when, when they detect motion and that will, they won't, we won't be filming em- empty air.
Right, so there's a motion detector, like cameras come on when it detects motion.
They'll detect the skunk walking by the front door as well as a teacher coming in on the weekend.
Teachers, yes. We don't know yet their wildlife capabilities.
Right.
What would you think, Neil? Skunks, yes or no?
Tall enough?
I would almost guess there's some form of a setting for sensitivity, you know, I don't know.
I don't want to miss a skunk coming by.
Go ahead, Roger.
One, uh, uh, significant new feature for those entering the building, there are, will be, are, they're already in place. There are power door openers on, on the right-facing door coming into the building, both the exterior door and the interior vestibule door activated by, by switches. So, those that, that need the assistance of being able to open a door by them, by themselves will be able to do so.
That's great.
One feature very quickly, cause we want to wrap up, um, that also is going to be in place soon, is that we're moving away from, um, keyless, uh, keyed entry and, and, uh, and that we're going to be soon, we're incorporating people's safety badges with, um, a card that acts as a fob to be able to swipe. So, it can do, which again adds to greater security and efficiency and monitoring the system.
And with that being part of a, an identification card that all staff members have, if a staff member is entering the building, uh, uh, after the, after the doors are locked, the staff member can swipe his or her card in the vestibule. They won't have to ring for the office personnel to, uh, to let them in. So, that's in a nutshell.
Thanks, Roger. Thanks, Bailey.
It's great work, guys. Thanks. Appreciate that.
If there's any questions, that was our.
That's fantastic. Thank you for the show and tell. Awesome.
If you'd like autographed copies of Neil's.
I want to want a Neil's installation. No, thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
Thanks for your share.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, the next item on this portion of the agenda is our AYP requirements. Mark, did you want to do this enough?
Just very briefly, at about four P M., uh, you would have received, um, from One Call Now, which is the new Alert Now, um, a, a letter that I'm obliged to write. Um, I took your feedback as a board, um, and put a little bit more detail in that letter in terms of what we're up to, generally speaking, in terms of trying to close that gap in performance, especially between kids with disabilities and those kids who are in poverty. Um, so that's one, um, that's one thing that I'm obliged to do by, by state and federal law. The list has gotten bigger of things that I have to do, um, as we find ourselves in year two, an improvement. Like many schools, uh, we're working with a, um, technician or a coach from the Agency of Education of helping us through, you know, the, the multiple steps that we have to take. The good thing is that, I think I mentioned to you at our last meeting, that they, they're holding our strategic planning efforts in, as an exemplar on how a strategic plan can be integrated with Green Mountain Star, which is the platform the agency is using for monitoring our progress to meet these outcomes. And so, we've, we've done, I think, an exceptional job marrying our strategic plan and language and indicators with what the agency is expecting us to do vis-à-vis AYP requirements. So, that was really good feedback and if the board was interested, our coach, if you will, Chris Case is willing to come and share with you sort of big picture on AYP and what that might be looking like over the next couple of years. So, that's one requirement that has been met as of four P M. this afternoon. Another, um, letter that will go out by mid-September, um, that is currently on, um, the drafting table, um, is a letter that will let parents know. Uh, those parents whose children are eligible for free and reduced lunch, that's the primary indicator for poverty, um, that they can avail themselves to supplemental services, um, for their child, up to about two thousand dollars per family to access consultation outside of the school district. So, we had to take money from our title money, which is federal money, and put it aside in supplemental serv- supplemental services line. Um, and the letter will go out and the parents will, can write and apply for or ask for those, for those monies to be dedicated to a, a, a bona fide supplemental service. And I think I mentioned to you last that it's a, it's, I think, a growing industry and, and the, the number of vendors is, has exponentially grown over, over the last number of years to provide, again, sort of certified services to, to kids.
Can you give a quick example of what one of those services might be?
Sure, um, so there are privates, there are private services with licensed staff, um, who are trained to remediate learning disabilities. Reading in particular, um, or, or it could be math, those are the two areas. So, there might be tutoring sessions that a child will go to, one-on-one or in a small group with a certified instructor.
Okay.
Like Sullivan, Stern Center?
Yeah, without, yeah.
Just, just those kinds of, that's what we're talking about. I've been trying to identify.
Those, those are the well-known, but there are, oh my, a variety.
Yeah.
So, there's gonna be, it's gonna be incumbent upon parents to know what the needs are and who the best vendor might be and, uh, we at this point don't play a brokering service at all. It's basically, here's your cert- here's the money, you go, you know, you can find that service. I think we'd want to inform parents about, obviously, the, the area of need that the child has and how best to remediate that. But, you know, we don't have a responsibility per se to, to, to manage that. So, in my letter, that will need to go out identifying that that is, um, you know, you know, a, a resource. And embedded in that letter will also be, um, so mentioned that because we're one district, we also, if we were a multi-town district S U, there'd be a choice option for families, so if they didn't like the service in one school, they could say, I want to go to the school at the south end. But because we're one district, choice is not an option. Um, there's no other place, this is the only game in town, um, cause you can't cross boundaries. So, I'll make mention of that, and that's, and that's new, new at this point, too.
And what students are eligible for?
For the supplemental service, only those students who are identified as being in poverty.
And those that are not meeting, um, they're not proficient, so.
But yes, students who, well, no, they would go up to all kids.
All kids.
Even, even if you met the standard.
Okay.
Okay.
How was it determined poverty? Does that tie in with Dr. Dinosaur?
Ties into whether or not you, for instance, you are a recipient of, of, um, Medicaid, res- you know, third, you know, if you're, if you're insurance. Yeah, it's an, it's income sensitive. So, kids who qualify for free lunch because of mom's and dad's income, they're automatically eligible. So, if, let's just say, for instance, that all those kids a- apply, we can use criteria to determine who's in the greatest need. You know, which would get it that who didn't meet the standard, but at this point, you know, that's.
So, do we have, I mean, is there any kind of a cap on that cost to the district or is it as many people as requested?
Many people as requested.
If everybody requests it, we are obligated to pay for that.
Certain amount of money, but if there are fewer people that apply, then, you know, we're, we're, you know, I'm not sure how the cap system works, but there's only so much money that we, we have available.
And so, Mark, I thought I understood you to say, like, now the title money is, is partitioned off, a portion of it for the purpose of meaning this obligation, if that.
Twenty percent.
Pardon?
About twenty percent.
Twenty percent, so twenty percent, um, and that would have been allocated to special education or what is title?
Been allocated towards kids who are at greater risk, who are not special ed eligible. So, special ed's a whole other, whole other funding source.
So, that was based on, um, academic need and now it's being pared off based on financial need.
Still academic need, but the thesis being that it's because of your finances that kids are at greater risk.
Right, we understand that disparity, so.
So, it's not, you're right, it's not about how you're performing.
It's not necessarily, so I guess my, my interest in understanding that better was that we've moved money that would have been directly targeted towards academic need, partitioned it off without that criterion being part of the process for allocation. We understand that that is our most at-risk population academically as well. What happens if those funds are not spent? So, can that revert back to the general population?
It, it, as long as we stay in.
Or your title one population, I'm sorry.
It rolls over to the next year, so as long as we, we, as long as we remain in improvement, meaning improvement status, we're always gonna have to have that piece cleaved off. So, if we don't use the twenty percent, then it'll roll over into next year and go into the next year's service.
But it never goes back into the general title one population?
So, there's potential that some kids who may not fall in the financial need care category but has academic needs, may, is there any way that those kids are gonna be impacted?
Not with title one.
Okay.
And is there any component of the letter you send that describes the resources that are available within our district? Or efforts happening with respect to that?
It's not going to be in my letter. There might be some general reference, but, um, you know, through our educational support team process, when kids are identified through our local screening instruments that, you know, Bobby and Suzie aren't doing well, moms and dads are identified. We, as a team, they look at how do we remediate, how do we provide the service, what does it look like? So, our title one dollars go to funding two positions in the district, one point eight F T E, both situated at el- the elementary school. Cause that's where the greatest, the, the greatest need is.
Yeah.
So, those two educators along with the team is, is, are working with mom and dad about what these interventions look like for kids.
I'm just thinking, if the letter is so prescribed that it doesn't afford you the opportunity to, um, remind people of the, the process, just like you described right now, not anything specific, but there are resources available and you may have an, already be, um, in contact with your educators or. I, I think that if, if you have the opportunity for that, um, it would highlight the fact that there are efforts happening within. Not so that people don't seek those additional funds and opportunities, but so that they don't feel as though if they don't, nothing's happening otherwise. I see that as a risk in this saying, come get your money, you can go to a tutor, when I know full well the academic support team model that is in place is targeted to exactly this need.
And what you've been hearing me talk about for the last couple of years is the best instruction is first instruction. And so, our building capacity through external and internal now coaching model, um, is, is providing that direct support to classroom teachers. Because we've been leaning in what is referred to as tier two services and it's often been, that responsibility's been fulfilled by special educators. And so, title is really important to us. So, you know, what's unfortunate is these kids may need supplemental services, but it's, it's gotta come from someplace and it's coming from direct service for all kids. So, so, you know, that coaching piece is becoming more and more critical so that teachers know how to, you know, remediate some of the disabilities that are in the classroom.
And the other concern I would have, I guess, with, I'm sorry, but I see concern in this process, not our fault, but it's prescribed, it's what we have to do, that those most in need may be least able to get their child to a tutor, um, you know, in the course of their day or make those services available even if the funds are available. I just, um, I'm not necessarily seeing the, um, bigger picture wisdom in, in this requirement, but I appreciate that that's nothing we can do anything about.
It's, it has, you know, we all are left with some, you know, yeah, some concerns about the model. It is what it is. And we are, because of our status, this is the first year we have to contribute the, and the, the likelihood that we're going to get out of this kettle of soup is, is, um, I don't know how it's gonna happen until, because when you ask John Fisher and the group from the agency, what is the smarter balance assessment course in the new kneecap S P A C, we still haven't heard in the field how that's gonna be incorporated into AYP. I may have mentioned to you, so excuse me if I did any incidentals, that I did request and who, um, that we Essex Town be part of the S P A C pilot, did I tell you?
You did, I think that I.
Which me, I'm very excited about that, um, that EMS allow be exempt from kneecap in the fall. We'll be taking S P A C in the spring.
Yeah, last time you told us that was a possibility.
You weren't sure if they'd have to do both?
I got the letter. I asked that, that Founders be included as well, but I don't know how they make the decisions. But I'm encouraged that, um, that we're now gonna be piloting the, the real thing and get a sense of road testing and what it's gonna be like. But also, I think it just creates this sort of interesting thing about AYP, but I'm not sure how that works, but, uh, well, you know, just.
New standard and you're still failing, no.
I'm curious with, with children being able to go outside to other tutoring services, has there been any effort to bring some of those, some of the community expertise into Essex? I, I know that, I mean, I personally happen to be familiar with, with the Stern Center for personal reasons and some of the things that they can provide, and they can provide teachers and educational guidance, training, things like that. Have we tapped into those resources in the community?
I don't think specifically, Dan, but this is how we get at that. I mean, it's a good question and, and, and they do provide a valuable supplemental service to families. We have a number of educators who work for the Stern Center or who have, who have done ancillary work or at, you know, adjunct work for them. We have people who've been trained by their staff, so in, that service gets in the door through the professional development that they offer. But specifically, we don't have them, you know, come in and provide the service, not that I'm, not that I'm aware of.
And that probably isn't afforded in that requirement for the up to two thousand dollars for, like, we couldn't make after-school tutoring available with that money. That's not an option, right? We just have to let families know that they can access it. If you can get your kid there, the money's available.
I believe it's, they have the autonomy to make those decisions.
So, we couldn't even facilitate that, which is, would be a really great idea if that existed.
Yeah, and again, I don't know that, what the rulebook says about that, but I will be better educated once we start dealing with this all. You know, people, so, I also want to be a little bit concerned that all people, that some people might think, well, it's a service, so I'm gonna take it, when in fact, is it really necessary? You know, just because you have a tutor doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be any. You know, just because you have a tutor doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be any more helpful than what we're providing in the school. So we'll figure that out, that's what we'll do.
Now, with that, like, if things are done in school, there's a whole feedback loop where the teachers are working with these specialists. Are there, is there going to be any connection with any outside vendor that these students might choose?
Not to my knowledge to the school, if, I would hope that mom and dad would want to talk about the strategies that are being worked in, on, in their, those sessions, but I don't think there's an obligation to have that happen.
That, just an anecdote, that's one thing that I've, I've heard frustration from parents and from outside educators, not just the Stern Center, but other outside places, that it's been very difficult to integrate with Essex Town.
Really?
That, that we're notoriously harder to integrate with than any other district.
Yeah, I haven't heard that.
And just a example of things being offered to this district. And said, no, we don't need that. We don't want that, when it's a free offering.
Well, all I can say is, what I would ask is if you, if there are people that you know in any one of those organizations that are willing to give me a call, I'd be interested to know what the systems problems are that prevent that from happening. I mean, I do know that sometimes it gets proprietary in terms of all work, and, you know, that's the private sector, this is the public sector, and there's a host of variables there that are always in harmony. But I, you know, I'd like to hear more about that. So I, I don't, it's not onerous, it's good work, it's important work, I have to do the work. And our, our approach has been to, with open arms, invite the agency to come in, help us think this through, do what I have to do, but know where I can bend, I bend. But there are some fairly specific requirements that I need to attend to, and that's my reason for bringing it to you today.
Yeah, I think the, you know, my, I'm just conscious of the time. We have quite a bit left on the agenda and only a half hour to do it. But I, I do want to say that what makes me a little weary or wary is what next year looks like in terms of the AYP requirements. If, if there's no end in sight to us being in this loop, what are the progressive penalties that we have to pay as a district? And I think it would be good for all of us to understand that. And so, I don't know if Chris or someone else could come in and paint that picture for the board, because I think we need to have a better understanding of, this is what it is today, this is what it might be tomorrow. I think we need to understand the full impact of this.
The, and just the short version is, people, we're in a school improvement, when you get into corrective action, that now you're in a whole different sort of league, and, you know, we've got a district, sister district to the, to the north and one to the east. And they're in year five, year six, and probably the most, the thing we have to get used to is you're giving up the tiller. You know, the agency comes in and they basically, now they're doing programming with you.
Right.
And that's not necessarily onerous, but that's, that's really what the next step is, is they don't, the law says if you can't get it done within the improvement plan, then someone's going to come in, and what Secretary Villaseca has said many times, I don't want to come in and run your school. Because they don't, they don't have the resources really to do it either, so. But Chris would definitely, based on today's rulebook, could give the board that picture.
Yeah, I think that might be helpful for us to kind of inform our thinking so that we can understand what the full impact of AYP is. I hate to move us along, but we do have to move along to the next item on the agenda, which is review and approve Monitoring Report 2.1, which was in your packets. I hope you've all had a chance to read it. And, Mark, unless there's something you want to say to tee it up?
Well, I'd just like to call attention to what we talked about on the fifteenth, and this is why the feedback to the superintendent is so important. Because honestly, it was, when I was, I was going through the notes, trying to patch together what it was I was supposed to do to bring this back. What I recall, and Kim pointed this out immediately, was, and honestly, when I looked at the first draft of this bullying, the bullying policy and procedures were mentioned, somehow it didn't get into this report. So that was like an obvious, like, wake up, like, hello. The other one, Dan had made a comment at the end of that meeting, how do you know we're ADA, how do we know we're ADA compliant? The board, the whole board didn't ring in on that. It was just, it was a good question. But I took that as sort of a directive. So we did bring in an apprentice to, our architect, and he did conduct an ADA compliance audit, if you will. And I reviewed the results this spring, and as I mentioned in your notes, with the exception, or in these, in the report, other than several lavatories not being handicap accessible, we, we passed the compliance test. So those are the only two new features to the report that I brought forward this morning.
And we passed even though there's a couple that aren't ADA compliant, because there are those that are?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Mark, mentioned on page four, it said, "See attached district summary of climate survey." I didn't see that in my packet materials.
Did I give it to you in May?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
The other one, okay.
Yeah.
So, so.
I know, I was thinking, is like, did I miss it somewhere? Did it not come through? Okay.
I'm sorry.
I think it was in the board package. I'll check my notes.
No, no, I think you're right. I think I just, not remembering that this was a, a little bit of a redo.
And I think, Mark, I remember that that was aggregate data, that it wasn't disaggregated for the buildings.
Yes.
And I think we had just stuck an interest in just understanding if there were patterns that you may identify for us.
Sure.
And actions, if there are, you know, particular areas, whether it's based on age or just issues, that, you know, we may hear anecdotally and may or may not have borne out in the data, but it might have, and that's not evident to us in an aggregate. So I.
I was just looking at building-based data just last week, so I mean, if climate survey is using it, but I could bring that to you if you're interested at some point this fall.
I think sometimes we're hearing the problems, so if it, it's hard to know if there's validity in it in a broader scale that it's compromising policy, or if it's a situation, and it might just help to know if you're identifying patterns that, just as you have in any place where we're not completely compliant, that you, what your plan is, and, you know, what do we expect for follow-up on those things? It just might paint that picture a little bit better for us.
Yeah, I'll remember that next time out with this, and I think, if we're drilling down to building level, I think I can easily present some general themes that come out of the building. Building data.
Any other questions or observations for Mark on this, on the, the report?
Is that something, Mark, that would be brought back another time? Like, or do we wait for a whole year till we see it again?
Well, you're going to look at your calendar tonight. I think it's still positioned at the end of school year thirteen, fourteen. But as you know, we can, I can always bring back sets of data, not in a full report.
Right, right now it's scheduled for May 12th.
Yeah. My only thought is that the climate survey happened last May.
Right.
So to, I would, I'd be interested in just seeing if there are themes and things being addressed, because it speaks to treatment of families and students, and also the mandatory policy of the bullying policy, which is relatively new for us, which we've not necessarily figured out how we're going to target all these mandatory policies and their monitoring.
Well, if we pull up the calendar, we can easily put 2.1 in there, sort of a subset of 2.1, and sure, the data are there.
Okay.
If that's everybody's interest, I could see benefit in that, because it doesn't make sense to wait a year.
Is there any objection to looking at that?
No.
Come on, data man. I know you don't have an objection. Seriously.
Also, I just also want to be, you know, respectful of the time and attention that Mark has to put in for all the other reports that we have.
Yeah, yeah.
I can manage that.
Especially if that's one you're already breaking down.
So we'll look, we'll look at a 2.1 update, and we'll look at that at the end of our meeting tonight.
Thank you.
If there are any questions, I wonder if we, if we could entertain a motion to accept the report as presented, with the one caveat being that the board is interested in seeing some of that follow-up data. Can we approve this report without that follow-up data?
Definitely.
Is there a motion?
A move to be approved, 2.1. What's that update?
Dan has made the motion.
A second.
Kim seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I opposed. Monitoring report is accepted, five-zero. Thank you, Mark. So it dawned on me on Friday that I had not assigned 4.1 to anyone before we went to the end of our retreat.
Even because I should have. I'm sorry.
Probably because, you know, you were supposed to.
I think at the end of the retreat, I know. But since we had no calendar, really, that was approved.
No worries, no worries. So, so I did prepare a monitoring report for 4.1. I distributed it on Friday, so you had it in time to review. I found, I found that we are in compliance, but as you saw in the report, and it was kind of dovetailed into our conversation at the retreat, I did identify two areas where we talked about sort of doing a better job in the coming year. So I tried to indicate what those things were in terms of the orientation process, and the review of sort of our, you know, ongoing process improvement, and also the other, the board will monitoring, will monitor our own progress. So I tried to sort of put some details in there about how we might action, what are some of the actions we might take around those two items. But are there any other questions that people had about the report? Or any suggestions for improvement?
Okay, I keep trying to go back to think if there's, like, especially being the newest board member.
Yes.
And trying to think if there's some different steps, you know, how that might be a process that can be better. Because it's great to say, you know, and a more concerted effort will be made.
But you want more.
But what does that mean?
Right.
You know, and I just think, you know, especially, you know, as we think in the future, because, you know, every year there are potentially board members that will be changing positions. And if there's a way, and this is something that, you know, I think, especially being the newest board member, things that I can think about that would have been more helpful.
Perfect time then, capture that and put it in a list.
That's what I'm trying to think of now, is like, you know, can we make a document that is kind of like the X, Y, Z of things that you should know, and these are kind of the topics that are most important? So even before you get that huge binder, where you kind of get overwhelmed, what are some different steps we can take right off? And so, you know, I don't mind trying to think about that over the next couple of weeks.
I would love that. I mean, I think that would be helpful, especially for, you know, bringing new people on board. I think the other thing that I wanted to somehow formalize was to, on a regular basis, remind board members about what kinds of opportunities are made available, especially through the Vermont School Boards Association and other regional meetings. There's lots and lots of opportunities, and I think that, as, if they were just more visible. And then through some, I mean, I want to be respectful of people's time and their ability to take on more. But I don't think it's too much to ask that, you know, at least once a year, maybe twice, that each of us participate in one professional development opportunity to help us do our jobs better as board members. So my, I think that putting together some kind of an orientation primer might be good. But I also wanted to, on a regular basis, say, here are the upcoming opportunities of workshops and conferences and webinars that the VSBA is providing. Are any of you interested in participating in these?
That's a great idea.
I mean, there's just a lot going on, and I think to find one a year is a reasonable expectation. So you want to keep talking about that idea? I think that would be great to see.
Do we want to reference it in this document so that it's a commitment, that it's a piece that we look at with orientation, I'm wondering?
So we can, I can make a friendly amendment if you'd like.
I'm just wondering if we want to.
Get to that level of specificity?
Yeah. I almost think in some ways we should, because then it's, that piece could be changed, but at least that piece is an expectation.
So, how can I word that?
A, almost like a, are you thinking, are you still of like a checklist of new board member?
The development of.
A tool to be used to orient new board members?
And.
We used to kind of have a packet of information of ethics.
Well, and I'm wondering if we could be specific in the courses even that you went to, because I think I remember, Brendan, when you and I came on, didn't we go, I, I went to Williston and did an off-site training on, you know, how to be a board member. I forget what it's called, but new board, I think it was board, new board member orientation or something to that effect, and there are some, you know, primers for policy governance. So we might be able to look at the list of offerings, and you might be able to say, okay, these were most helpful, and maybe even in this order. Or, and you might be able to think of the things that you didn't have that you wished you had had going into it.
Like this is a one-page as to what policy governance is. This is an example.
So how about this as a friendly amendment? The board agrees to put together an orientation guide to be completed before the end of the calendar year. Is that specific enough? And then we can, without naming names, and about people who might collaborate on that document?
We could do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So if that's agreeable, I think we'll add to the report under number four. The board agrees to put together an orientation guide due before the end of, the end of the calendar year. So with that friendly amendment, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the monitoring report as presented, including the friendly amendment.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any further discussion?
Can I do that on here right now?
You certainly can, yeah.
Do we want to?
Yes.
I was just wondering if we wanted to add to that very last sentence that if you go to a professional development opportunity, there's a brief, bring it back to the team.
Oh, right.
Like a loop.
A report out.
That sort of brings back to the team, highlights, so that either it might pique interest in attending, or it might just share that wealth of knowledge gained in that couple of hours.
I think that's a great idea. So in addition to the softness around a more concerted effort.
I love that phrase.
Why don't we change that sentence that starts with, each member will need to identify such opportunities? Why don't we add to that sentence and, and be expected to report out to the full board about that experience? Are you following all this over there, Mr. Secretary?
Trying to.
Ms. Secretary? So the, the sentence above the one that Dan is writing right now, each member will need to identify such opportunities and communicate with the chair about plans to participate? That's, that's too many uses of opportunities.
We were okay with that.
I'm now wordsmithing myself on public access television. So, we need to add to that sentence. Can you add to that, board members will be expected to report out to the full board about their professional development experiences? Something like that? See, this is where technology is actually a detriment to us. Because then we start doing group edits.
Not my intent at all. I just wanted to hold us to.
No, no, I think it's great. I love, I love this night that we're.
Board members will be expected to report out on their professional development.
Just add experiences at the end of that, just so we can.
And are we adding that to the friendly amendment?
Yes, this is all being crushed into one friendly amendment. It's becoming a little less friendly.
It's feeling way less friendly, isn't it, Brendan?
But if everybody is comfortable with those changes to the report.
I consider that to be the friendly amendment.
Okay.
Okay. And I still talk it up.
The motion still stands.
Do we add in thumb screws will be applied if.
Stop. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed or abstentions? I could certainly, all right, so, thank you. I think this is a great step forward in us coming up with at least the semblance of an action plan. And now it'll be our responsibility as a board to remember that we've assigned ourselves this homework. So, good stuff. Thank you. Okay, back to the agenda. At the end of every meeting, we have agreed to take a peek at the, at the work calendar. And this will also tie into assigning the next board monitoring report. So if we look at our calendar, our work calendar, for our September ninth meeting, there is Policy 4.3, which is agenda planning. I think I did that one last year because it related to our efforts to put an agenda together on a regular basis, so. I can do it again, or actually, if you would take it, that would be fantastic.
Sure, yeah, I'll take it.
Okay.
Another thing that might live under there, not in terms of the board's report, but in your minutes of your retreat, you know, you identified five goals, and also in that text, talked about bringing back the retreat discussion at an early board meeting, because it's, I can bring 2.1 back, Kim, on those data we just talked about for climate survey, under ends, I can put that there. But under agenda plan, it might be just revisiting retreat minutes and make sure there's a.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's a great point.
It would just be an agenda, I don't know if necessarily needs to go into.
Yeah, I
Can you add in the two point one someplace? If you're okay, the board, I can, on the ninth
You can just bring it whenever.
I can put back executive, it would be ends, no, executive limitations, excuse me, two point one.
Right, so two point one.
It's not a full report, it's just the climate survey.
Yeah, put a little asterisk near it, and we'll know that that means. Okay. And that is a good reminder that I think we do want to just kind of revisit and affirm those goals that we set out at the end of the retreat.
Do any of those have to live on the calendar, other than
Yeah, that's a good question.
where they're sitting, but
Well, tonight, there was a, an item on the agenda to actually review and adopt the calendar. Is that something we can do tonight, or do you want to wait until our next meeting when we have an opportunity to remind ourselves of the goals that we set during the retreat?
Yeah, I think that may make sense to, unless it's
I think we could adopt this with the understanding that this is not written in stone.
Right.
That we, we will add
It is a living document in some respects.
Yeah, we do.
For change every month.
We do.
Why don't we do that then, because I think that, at least in its current form, this is the game plan. And we know that that game plan changes throughout the year, but I think as, in terms of, if somebody were to say, you know, what's your schedule? We can at least point to this and say, this is our, our plan for the year. So I will entertain a, a motion to accept this board work calendar for two thousand thirteen, fourteen.
So move.
David moves it. Is there a second?
A second.
Rachel, any further to conversation?
Can you take draft off?
All right, wait, wait until we vote.
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now you can remove draft.
I love this.
Boy, you're picky.
Wasn't that great? I expected you like a gong. All right, so
Draft is on the other end.
So one of our agenda items for our next meeting will be to revisit those, those five goals, four or five goals that we set out at the, at the retreat. Because as I recall, there were some pretty lofty goals that would require some work and pre-planning, so
I could also, Brendan, and board, see, again, because we don't have a packed agenda, not that that's a bad thing, but I could see if my buddy Chris Case from the agency would be available on the ninth, while it's fresh on our minds.
I think that
Chris doesn't have answers, he can just tell you what the, the game plan is, but
Well, given the fact that it's, it's not light, but I mean, we have a relatively contained, you know, the meetings get a little more complicated in October, so I think it probably, you know, the next meeting would be the best meeting to have that presentation. Especially since it's fresh on our minds, the letter just went out to parents. If they're, you know, if members of the community are interested.
Questions, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so I think that
I'll put a call in and see if he's available.
I mean, I, on the one, as I mentioned to you in my email, I really appreciate the fact that the AYP letter was a more, a little bit more descriptive this year. And while it's fresh in parents' minds, we can invite them to come and hear from Chris about kind of what it all means.
Yeah, okay, good. I'll see if he's available.
That's a great idea.
Wonderful. Anything more for this evening? Anything, any new business that we need to entertain? Any feedback from me or from Mark before we close?
One question I have is our role in the calendar meetings. I've begun to get questions on that topic. And I'm wondering, are we, I presume we are attendees of the calendar meetings to be held at the high school. I think it's the second.
I, I promoted those dates on our Facebook page, so that people were aware of them, who follows on Facebook.
I just, I don't know if anybody else has been hearing anything about it.
Yeah, I got an earful the other day about it. And, you know, I was struck by the amount of rumors that fly, fly around about the calendar. You know, I had a parent tell me, oh, I heard this was a done deal, and that this is going to, like, this is going to happen. And I'm like, oh, well, that's not my understanding. My understanding is that there probably is going to be some more conversation about it. And there is a group of parents that are, that have organized, sort of, I think they're Save Our Summers or something. So they, they have definitely started to, to spread the word about people showing up and sharing their opinions. The way I presented it personally is that I feel like, and I have not presented this at the board's position, but my position, that I feel like I have a lot of questions that I still have about the calendar, and am not ready to sort of take a position on the calendar, other than to say, if the calendar in some way, shape, or form is meant to improve student outcomes, then let's, let's have a discussion about it. And so until I sort of get that question answered, for, I can't really take a position. That is my personal
Right.
feeling on the calendar.
And I'm, can I understand better, Mark, the, it's a done deal rumor or sentiment? Because it does, in some ways, feel that way as you read things and hear things. We approve a calendar in April, but if the regional superintendents were to decide this is the regional calendar, is it our calendar? It, it remind me of the legislation around calendars and regional calendars.
The board hasn't, I don't believe, we can check them, but it hasn't approved a calendar for, it might have been the first year I was here, but I don't think you have in the last two years, because statutorily, you don't have a role in that. I think it's, it's only courteous, it's courteous to let boards know what the school year calendar is going to look like. Statutorily, in Title sixteen, it's the superintendent's region that makes that decision, that notifies the secretary by April first of the preceding year.
My understanding, and I could be wrong, is that the calendar has been part of a consent agenda item.
Okay.
Like, and not necessarily for approval, but
It's pro forma.
Yeah, it's sort of like, here's the calendar. It's more of an affirmed versus approved.
That's what it is.
So I think it has been part of our consent agenda in the most recent past.
Okay. Well, I do remember a conversation around it with respect to the parent conference days and things like that. So, I mean, it's certainly been on our agenda. But is our district at liberty to say no if all the other districts around us say yes?
Yeah, we can take time tonight, or I can, yes, I can say no.
Okay, I was just wondering. I didn't know if in the, in Title sixteen, or whatever it is
Majority of the voices care, the affirmatives carry the, carry the vote.
Carry the regional calendar.
And we've always had, at least since I've been working in this region three years, we've come to consensus, because it's pretty much been every year, it's just a tweak here, tweak there. But I can tell you that there isn't a consensus currently in the superintendent's group that this, that this, that this is the right way to go. For numbers of reasons, and I've been public with my feelings with my colleagues, and I can tell the board in, in public tonight that I, I think it's too ambitious. I believe that it needs to be studied and well-vetted and talked about with a number of different stakeholder groups, and a plan needs to be in place before we roll it. And I think there are too many questions that we have in terms of the structures that are not in place, and how to, for instance, provide intercession support to children. So I, I have questions about, I think it's an aggressive and ambitious agenda, one which I support the conversation about, is this a means to an end?
Right.
And how does that, how would that work? But to think that, that we're going to get multiple towns with this, this, this region to agree to, I think is, I think it's ambitious. In all due respect to those who feel it's plausible, I think I have questions about, you know, how, how we would pull that off. And again, I've been clear with my superintendent colleagues on that.
I just didn't know if, like, somehow we're following because of, like, the tech centers, or I couldn't recall what the rules are on that.
The regions of Vermont are, the constellation of school districts are around the tech center.
Tech centers, okay.
Yeah. So the question, I think, is a good one, which I don't know, you know, I have all, when we approve a calendar at the regional level, individual superintendents can ask for waivers. For, you know, we have to agree on one hundred and seventy-five common student days, and then the other little days that we use, we, we sort of bid and barter and chip away at that. Could I hypothetically, you know, if the majority of superintendents in the region said, we're going to go forward with the proposal, or some fax mail of the concurrent proposal, we go forward with it, do I, as an individual superintendent, have the right to say, well, I, I want a waiver from that? To, we're somewhat of an anomaly. We don't have a high school. We're tied to our high school with transportation, so there's some things we have to look at there. But, you know, conceivably, we could run a program like we've always run a calendar while the other parts of the region. Again, I'm not suggesting we do that, but I think
No, that, that was my question that
No, no, but these are all, these are all things that we have to research.
Not because we would operate in isolation. That wasn't why I was asking, but I was asking to really understand that exact comment which keeps coming up is that it's a done deal, and that enough people have said it's happening, so it's happening. You can say what you want.
Yeah, I mean, I guess what worries me
So it's not the case.
But what worries me about that concept, that misconception that people have, is that it may affect attendance to some of these public hearings, where I think that's the opportunity to ask the hard questions that need to be asked about, you know, why is this a good move? How is this going to help students, you know, be better learners, and is this the right way to go? And, and like I said, I have not taken a position on it, but I want everyone to be involved in the conversation.
Yeah, the purpose of the meetings is to get community feedback. And I think we're going to get a lot of feedback, as we should.
I hope so.
And I believe, Brendan, when the questions are asked, we're not going to have the answers to them.
Right.
Yeah.
And, and, and I think that that's telling, because I think we need to get the answers to a number of tough questions before we launch it. And right now, I don't see those answers coming up readily.
So I think the takeaway now is that, I think as board members, we should all encourage attendance
Absolutely.
and participation in these, in these hearings or these forums, because the questions do need to be asked, the conversation needs to be had. And I think it's our role as a board to say, let's have the conversation, let's talk this out.
It's an important one to have.
It is, absolutely.
And, you know, we hear that it's a calendar that's been around for a hundred years. That's true.
Right.
But it doesn't necessarily mean that calendars been, things that are around for a hundred years don't still work. And I do believe we have to have the conversation, because I think there's some real merit to the proposal.
Sure.
Contiguous days of learning is, is, is a really wonderful thing.
Yeah.
It really is. I mean, it's a great notion, but how do you put that together at a, at a regional level, I think it's going to take some work.
Yeah.
Well, that concludes the other business portion of our meeting.
Yes.
I want to thank Kim for taking on the next, monitoring report is four point three, Agenda Planning. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And we will get together and flesh out the rest of the, the agenda. Sounds like we've got some great stuff on tap already. Any other thoughts before we close the meeting? All right, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
A second.
Non-debatable? All of us in favor?
Aye.
We are now adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, guys.